All right, thank you. We have some recognitions this morning. The first recognition that I would like to make is for our secretary to tell him happy birthday.
I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
Okay. He told me before we started, wait just a second. He told me before we started, he attended a state board meeting last year on his birthday, but that meeting was in Key West, Florida. So I'm not sure we're quite as far as on the same level, but we are glad he's here and I wish him happy birthday. I would sing, but the meeting would be done, so we won't do that. All right. We have some other recognitions this morning. Recognition of the United States Senate Youth Program. Arkansas Delegates, Dr. Pride. Or is that who's going to do that this morning or no? Okay. Did that take, I didn't change, I printed, that changed after I printed my agenda. Okay, I'm sorry. I'll go by the one on the computer here. All right. Teacher Appreciation Week, I know that's up because I see Ms. Saracini here bright and smiling this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner, Educator Effectiveness and Licensor. And today, and this whole week is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
And we've been out on the road and visiting several, and it's been a great week. But this morning, we're going to recognize two of our up and coming future teachers. And you know, we've talked about the residency model. Ross White, come up here, because this has been a collaboration between DCTE and my division. And you know, we've talked about getting these high schoolers, and they're going to leave with that certified teaching assistant. Well, we have two that are going to graduate next week. And they are going on to be teachers, going on to ASU BB. And going, one is going to focus on elementary, the other is going to focus on elementary and special ed. So we're excited and we want to recognize them this morning. But first, anything you would like to say about that, Ross?
No, I think the important part here is just us able to use the courses that, I'm sorry, the courses that we already had in place and then be able to, you know, morph that into an opportunity for these students to earn non-credit hours towards that education degree that we're, you know, seeking for them is a really important piece. And it goes back to our career pathways and ensuring that we're giving our students clear pathways that, you know, move them to that next step, whether it be work, whether it be continuing that education, and then giving them that credential. So at CTA is so important because they can be employed by a district, you know, immediately upon graduation and have that as they continue to work through their education degree. And we know that the retention part there is going to be a very powerful piece moving forward. So we're excited to kind of have that first initial group coming out and hope to see the fruits of our labor in the years to come.
All right. So we would like to recognize their teacher, Ms. Mandy Wolf. Please stand. And then we would like to, Cadence Ray and Lacy Langdon. And they are here. And would you like for them to speak just a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Right on out.
Welcome.
I'm Mandy Wolf, and I am the Introduction to Teaching and Educational Technology Instructor at BB High School. And these two are two of my golden students. Sad to see them go, but I'm super excited for what they've accomplished thus far in, in high school in their senior year. And so I will let them tell you just a little bit about their favorite experience from this school year.
Hi, my name is Lacy Langdon, and like they said, I plan to go to ASU BB in the coming year. My favorite experience overall has been being able to be in the classroom with students. That is something that'll definitely tell you whether or not you want to be a teacher. I actually got to intern in kindergarten, and I loved them. And I got to go in a couple of special education rooms as well. And I just love being able to work hands-on with the kids and being in the classroom with them.
All right, awesome.
I'm Cadence Ray, and I plan to also attend ASU BB and then transfer to A-State to complete two master's degrees in school administration and school counseling. And I would have to say my favorite memory would have to be being in the classroom. Even on those bad days where you just necessarily don't want to be at school, I walked in those classrooms and you get the hugs and the smiles and the "I missed you", and it just makes your day 100% better. And so that's definitely what has impacted me the most and been the most memorable for my experience this year.
All right. Lacy and Cadence, we're very proud of you. And one of these days, we'll look forward to hearing the great things that are coming out of your classrooms. So congratulations.
Some gear for Teacher Jessica. And I do want to say that our Teacher of the Year, Jessica Song, got to visit this classroom in person, and so I think that was pretty special too.
All right.
Send me some pictures.
Do we have pictures? Okay, let's see if we can get some pictures forward. Let's get a picture with them.
Thank you so much.
All right. That's exciting to see new teachers come into the pipeline and think about what they'll be one day and have the excitement catch to not only their classrooms, but to their coworkers and the whole building of what their impact will be. So it's a good thing to see more coming into the teaching profession. Yeah.
If I was going to answer, I think what's exciting about what we're seeing today is where high schools are looking at developing their own talent.
Yes.
Right there, you just met two young future educators, right, in the community that's going to go to school in the community, come back and teach in the community. And I know Ross and Karly and their team have been working on really building out what that experience looks like. And even some of the provisions and learns that we're going to be bringing to this board from rules on tuition reimbursement possibilities for high school students just like that to be able to pursue their credentials to become highly effective candidates. And oftentimes when we talk about workforce development, and I know a lot of people like to talk about industry and bringing in high school highways jobs, but I'm always the first to remind everybody that in a lot of our communities, the school district is the largest employer in the community. And they hire more than just teachers. They hire internet technicians and accountants and food service workers and diesel mechanics. So these kind of programs are inspiring, and I would love to see every high school embrace a program like this at some point moving forward. So congratulations to the school and to the students.
Yes, yes. I think there's been a lot of research done that says that when we move into adulthood, many times we live just a few miles from where we grew up, and that grow your own is a huge thing that we need to tap into for the teaching profession, for sure. All right. Our next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda, and we do have one change that we want to make to the agenda. We want to pull off of the consent agenda just the long-term subs from item six to consideration of reports on waivers to school districts for teachers teaching out of area for longer than 30 days. So we're going to pull just that portion, the long-term subs, and put that on the action agenda. And we will put that at the end of the action agenda. It'll be item five, I guess it's still five, let me check the.
It'll be five.
Okay, okay. Item five, okay. All right. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on then to the action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is consideration of standards accreditation waivers. Dr. Sutherland.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Matthew Sutherland, Standards and System Support. We have a standards request from Wynn School District. They're requesting a standard for accreditation waiver 1A4. That's for 178 instructional days due to the tornado that devastated the community on March 31st, 2023. And I believe Dr. Moore is online.
Dr. Moore, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to present your waiver request this morning?
Yes, we are on the year-round calendar, and so when the tornado hit, we were heading into a break already. And so we only lost five instructional days, even though we were out of school, or we were out longer than five days from the tornado. And so we worked really, really hard to get those kids back on site. And with a short summer, you know, one of our concerns, we do run summer school. And so if we extend the year, we're going to cut into that summer school, and it's going to push it out towards the end of June, which then cuts us down only three weeks that some of those students would have to have, you know, a mental break and a little downtime as well as the teachers. And so we're just requesting with all the hard work that everybody put in and with that short summer already, and we'll get kids back in a very quick manner that we could get that waiver approved.
Okay. I think you should be applauded for the work that you and your team, and I know in conjunction with the team here at DESI, have done to get kids back in classrooms after such a devastating occurrence, you know, missing only five days. You know, it was, I know it was countless hours that you put in night and day. And I want to say on behalf of the board how much we appreciate all that you have done and your team have done to get those students served and back in classrooms. So thank you for that.
We thank you, and we couldn't have done it without Secretary Leiva and his team. And so that's a huge testament to their commitment to us and our state as well.
Yes, all right. Are there any questions that the board would like to ask for Dr. Moore? All right. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Woods to approve the waiver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hill, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
Chair with Dr. Moore on there. You know, there isn't a district ever saying that they hope a natural disaster is headed their way. When these things happen, it takes a community by surprise. And it's really a testament and challenge to resiliency when a community has the impacted hit, that has hit like the district in Wynn. And I could tell you, we've had folks that have been in the school district almost every day, and they're still going there every day to be a partner with the school district opening. And anytime there's a natural disaster like this, the first step to recovery is getting schools open. And the commitment that the school board and Dr. Moore and his team made to say, we're going to not only just come back, but come back stronger and thrive even harder to get schools open and welcome in-person learning and only lose five days of instruction is really, really truly remarkable. There was catastrophic damage to their schools and their community, and they've got a long road ahead of them. This is, this isn't an overnight flip the switch and everything's back to normal. They're going to be on a path to recovery for several years. And I just, I can't commend Dr. Moore and his leadership and his team in any higher than words can possibly say to their commitment to that community and to those families and students. And they're working on some temporary sheltering, more permanent temporary sheltering for high school and getting athletics. And he's promised me they're going to have Friday Night Lights right there in the community in August, and I believe he's going to make it happen. And hopefully, we can all attend that event because that's when the whole community come back together and really celebrate. So thank you for what you do and how hard you work.
Thank you, thank all of you. We do have a long road ahead of us, but we know through prayers and the hard work, we're going to come out okay. We've been saying all along, we started this coming out of COVID, that jaggs don't just survive, they thrive. And I think that this has been a testament to our team and our community. And we're going to be okay, and we appreciate every one of you for all you've done. And it has not gone unnoticed, and we wish we could thank everyone, but then we would end up leaving someone out. But we've been blessed and thank you.
I think one of the true testaments to student body that they serve and the community serves is we've all seen the pictures of the catastrophic damage to the high school, and they had some flag poles out front that remain, but the flags disappeared. And one of the flags was the American flag, another one was the school flag. And some students found those flags out in the community, and within two days later, rehung them back up at that school. They are going to come back strong, and I just, that's such a great story of what that community is really rallying around.
Well, we appreciate you, Dr. Moore, and thank you. I know you're busy. We appreciate you taking the time to join us this morning, but I wish you the best. And I think you know that if there's anything that you need, all you have to do is send a ask this way.
Yes, we do. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Sutherland.
So the second waiver request that we have on the agenda is for Woodlong School District, and they're requesting a one-year, 1A5 class-size standards for accreditation waiver for the 2022-2023 school year. The waiver is actually for a second grade class that exceeds the maximum class size by one, and the superintendent is here to speak to the waiver.
Okay, Superintendent, come forward and introduce yourself and then give us a little information about the waiver.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Kevin Hancock, Superintendent Woodlong Schools. I appreciate the board considering this waiver for our district to explain what happened. We did have a teacher resign prior to our spring break. Coming back from spring break, we had another teacher that volunteered, had taught that grade level to prepare that grade for our testing, state testing. And she had already taught the essential skills for the NWEA at the lower grades. So our administrator made that shift. It put our second grade at maximum, and then we had another enrollment. And my request is for the remainder of the year and to fill that position and to more teachers with kids coming into our district the next year. We're showing growth, and I wish I would have stopped those new teachers. Been the first one to catch them for an interview. But I would appreciate very much if you would grant us this waiver for the remainder of the year.
Okay, all right. So they are asking for a waiver just for the remainder of the school year for this one class. Does the board have any questions for Dr. Hancock? All right, we're ready for a motion then.
I make the motion that we approve the waiver for Woodlong School District.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rollins to approve the waiver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Ms. Hunter first, okay. A second by Ms. Hunter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. We have a consideration of extension of Act 1240 waivers for the Brickley School District. Ms. Freeno.
Thank you, Ms. Newton Laurie Freeno, Arkansas Department of Education. The Brickley School District has requested waiver of educator licensure and library media specialist licensure. Originally, they had asked for a waiver for a period of three years, but we had thought one year would be more appropriate, and the school district has agreed to the one year. Dr. Pfeffer would like to make a couple of comments about this. I will say that Dr. Poole and her principals from both her elementary and high school are on the way, but they are not here yet, so.
That traffic is terrible this morning.
Yeah, I can imagine. It was horrible, but Dr. Pfeffer is here to visit.
Good morning, board members. And we did reach out to Dr. Poole and let her know that we were looking at doing that waiver request for a year, and they were in agreement with that. I did tell her that some of the data she provided for me was really helpful. It's obvious that they are really working on their staffing. All of their teachers who are on a waiver are meeting the AQT, Arkansas Qualified Teacher Requirements. So that means they have background or expertise in the area where they're assigned, so that's a positive. And I was also impressed with their low turnover rate. I think they only had five vacancies at the time we were working with them. And while I'm sure they would like to have fewer vacancies, that is a positive. That's a much smaller number of spots to fill, and they're looking to even combine some teaching assignments in order to make sure that they've got the very best people in front of kids. So I just wanted to bring that out, that I do think this is a district that has been utilizing that flexibility and working toward the end goal of having well-prepared teachers in their classrooms.
Okay. I'm sure they're on their way. Do we want to give them an opportunity to speak when they get here or if they were to come in later?
I think, I mean, I think that would be up to you all. I do know Ms. Jackson and Ms. Saracini talked to them the day before yesterday.
Perfect timing.
All right.
Perfect timing.
Okay. All right.
We were stalling.
I was just bragging on you, so they may have a few questions.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. Traffic is fun, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. Why don't you share just a little bit about why you're wanting the waivers and some things that you've done?
Well, one reason I want the waivers is because we've been having a hard time filling positions. Right when the pandemic started, we had a teacher turnover that was massive. We lost about 15 teachers, haven't been able to refill positions. So we accessed the waivers to be able to do that. And so with the waivers, of course, you know, it comes challenges as far as making sure that the teachers are not only prepared with teaching, but understand the behavior piece, the social-emotional piece, know what, understand what core instruction and tier-one instructions should look like in a classroom. And so we have had to utilize the, one of the waivers that we had that we no longer have this year coming up is the one where we had early release Wednesday. And we used that time to train teachers, develop teachers, because the waiver teachers do not have the background in education. So that's a piece that's been a challenge for us, and so we use that time to coach them, train them, and prepare them for the classroom. So we were able to, like I say, get some of them trained. And when we do get them trained and we do get them certified, we've had turnover with that as well. Once they get certified, they go to other districts. So we've been trying to see how can we keep them in-house? And so we started to grow our own model, looking from within the community for people to be able to, that will stay in Brickley. Because it's all about the quality of life. People think that if we just say we're going to offer you this, or we're going to pay for this, that people will stay, but they don't stay, especially if they can't find housing. And we have a problem with housing in Brickley. Fifty percent of my staff commute in from other places. So if they can find a job somewhere else, they're going to do that. So that's been one of the challenges that we've had. And by us trying to also participate in the teacher prep program with the high school students as well, getting them in the program, getting them interested in education as part of our own teacher model. And so without the waivers, we would not have been able to meet the standards. We just would not have.
How many of your teachers that are on waivers are actually pursuing certification through maybe what was Apple or MAT? Or are the majority of them pursuing?
Yes, majority of them are pursuing. I have two that are currently in MAT program. I have one who is in the PE teacher at the elementary who's completed the Apple program. I have one, he's not in a program, but he's getting into our PEP program, and he's teaching secondary history at the high school. I have a elementary teacher, like I say, she's one of the ones that, she teaches kindergarten, that she's in the MAT program and is looking to finish up this May. I had one, Ms. Raymond, who's not returning, but she did complete the Apple program. I have another teacher who started the our PEP program this year, just teaching business. And I have a traditionally trained teacher who's just had some portions of her practice test that she still needs to pass. I have, I had nine, but on Tuesday, one of mine's actually got his license. So that's one less from the list, yes.
Is it a requirement at your district that they pursue a license?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I value high academic achievement for myself, for my students, for the staff as well, as well as effective teaching in every classroom. So that will always be a requirement, and that is why we put so much time in developing and training them.
Let's see if we have questions from the rest of the board. Anyone? All right. This waiver is for a one-year waiver for educator licensure and library media specialist licensure. So we are ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion for this one-year waiver.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Rollins to approve the waiver for one year, seconded by Dr. Hill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Poole, for being here this morning and driving and finding the traffic this morning. We appreciate it. All right. Our next one is consideration request for approval of nominated members for the PLSB Board. Ms. Saracini.
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner. Today, I come before you to ask, we are recommending Melissa Spears. She is a superintendent at Jessiville School District to replace Ms. Dr. Martin, who is currently on our board. Her term has expired, and we are recommending that Ms. Spears takes and replace the position that Dr. Martin currently holds through the end of June.
Okay.
And again, some of you are new. This is a three-year term. And on the Professional Licensor Standards Board, it's specific in law, how many administrators, how many teachers, and how many higher ed. So this is replacing one of the admins.
Okay. How often does the PLSB Board itself meet?
We meet quarterly as a whole board, but Dr. Martin actually was our chair for our subcommittee, and our subcommittee meets monthly because they go through, the subcommittee is actually the one that goes through all the allegations. And sometimes we, when there's an uptick in allegations, they may meet more than once.
Okay. I was just curious about, you know, the time that a person that came on to this board would be out of their district, you know, with their own students and staff. And so, but the, this particular person would be out quarterly for a meeting?
For the board, yes. And it's typically a half a day in the morning.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, we are ready for a motion then. We have a motion by Ms. Woods to approve the nomination. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with Mr. Henderson this morning, so I have a second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Saracini. All right, our next item on our agenda is consideration for final approval rules governing school counseling programs.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Lori Freino, again. We are here before you for the final approval on the rules governing school counselors. They, these rules were, you approved them for public comment release. They then were approved by the governor's office, put out for public comment. We did receive some public comments and made some, a few changes based upon those, but none of the changes were substantive. So we are asking at this point that you give these rules your final approval so that we can then take them to the ALC Rules Subcommittee. And my colleague from school counseling, Andrea Fortner, is here in case anyone has any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Fortner or Ms. Freino about these rules?
Yes, I have a question this morning.
Okay, Ms. Rollins?
On page four, three point zero, one point three. I'm just a little concerned that youth mental health training will be every four years, and that, to me, doesn't seem often enough.
I believe that is statutory, and I will ask Ms. Fortner. I believe that comes right out of statute.
Good morning. I'm Andrea Fortner. Thank you for listening with us this morning. And so that piece comes directly from legislation that was revised this year in learns to read youth mental health training. And the prior legislation was out of school safety, and SROs and school counselors were added. This was added pretty recently, so prior to that, there was no requirement for this kind of training. Many counselors get it way more often than this. This is just kind of the least amount that counselors do, but often their training goes way beyond this requirement.
Yes, in this day and time, it just seems like we need it a lot more often than ever. But thank you for your shared information.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion on the rules for governing school counseling?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, Ms. Rollins, to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. All in favor? Any opposed? Yes.
Chair, just if I could take a minute, I'd like to say publicly, I think everybody knows I have a special place in my heart for attorneys. I tend to make friends with them, but this is Lori's last, this is Lori's last meeting, presenting, and probably item that she's presenting to the state board, and I can tell you as somebody that's worked for a few months with the legal team here, Lori is an outstanding person, a passionate person that really stands for what's right for students, and has just been a tremendous colleague to work with. And I did make her look up to see how long she has to sit out in retirement before we could try to lure her back. She's going to get a phone call exactly six months from now saying, "Are you bored?" We really enjoyed working with her, and I know the team has really enjoyed her counsel and her camaraderie and just the spirit she brings to this agency. She's sorely going to be missed, so thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, Secretary. Can I just, oh, standing, oh, my God. Can, may I just say that, I mean, this has been such an honor representing this board for the past ten years, and it's just been an honor, and I respect you all so much because I know how you really, I mean, how much you've put into this. This is a lot of work to be a member of this board, and you do care so much about every individual student, and that's just so important. And I, you know, when we were having our moment of silence today, I took that opportunity to be grateful for the lawyers I've worked with in legal over the last ten years, starting with Jeremy Lassiter and then Kendra Clay, and all the way through to today with Shasta back there. And I also really, really was grateful and thought about the fact that I have so many colleagues like Andrea, who don't, you don't see their face a lot here, but they do so much work, and without them, you know, we just would be nothing. We would be nothing, and we're just so lucky to have all those people. They're so wonderful, but thank you so much.
Well, I have a little bit more to add to that on behalf of the board, because we, I don't know if the rest of the board are like me, but we'll get emails, and they'll be over my head, and I don't know exactly how to answer or how to phrase or what the legal ramifications of what I would say. And I would just either email or text Lori and say, "Lori, I need some help." And she never complained. She would always give me just the perfect answer, and sometimes she'd just take care of it for me. And Lori is a rock that I have stood on these last seven years, and I just want to say thank you for all that you've done for me, and I count you as a friend. And I just want to say thank you for that, for being so supportive of us as board members, because it is difficult to know what to say sometimes, and you're just right there for us, so thank you for that.
You better not say you're my friend, or you'll get a Christmas card with my dog's song.
I look forward to it. I look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, Lori. All right. We have one more item on the action agenda. We moved the long-term subs off of the consent agenda, and Dr. Pfeffer is coming and is going to explain what we're going to do with long-term subs lists.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So an educational entity requests a long-term sub waiver when they're not able to have a licensed individual in the class for more than thirty consecutive instructional days. And long-term sub requests have to be made each semester, so the approval for a long-term sub does not go past a semester, and so second semester, any requests for long-term subs come in. Our team reviews those requests. A long-term sub has to have at least a bachelor's degree, so that's one of the requirements. So typically, you see those on the consent agenda because they're pretty routine, and, you know, ideally, you don't have to go more than one semester with a long-term sub. And what we're finding out is because of all the different pathways we have, a lot of times, we're able to, someone that might go past a semester, we're able to find another alternative for them to be able to stay in a classroom. This time, though, we started hearing some concerns because of several of the requests on here for the Alternative Learning Program from the Archford Co-op. And so that's why we would like to just ask you today to consider the long-term sub requests that are not part of the Archford ALE learning requests, and then we need to look and address that separately. So that would be the request, starting at the beginning with Alma, going through that first page, and then I believe there's one at the very end that is one of the correctional schools, DHS. There was a long-term sub request there. So, Madam Chair, if it would be appropriate for the board to consider just part of these requests and then not approve the others, and we can address those separately, that would be our recommendation this month.
All right. So the long-term sub request would be for everything on this list except for those that had to do with the Archford Educational Service Cooperative, and then you're going to look at those and then come back to us next month with what your results are and what, the results of what you have investigated and found. Before we vote, we do have someone that has signed up for public comment. And Board, we would have to approve to hear public comments, so what is your pleasure on this?
We have to allow public comment.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Wood to allow public comment. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Hill. Ms. Alma. And public comments are three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Please consider this an urgent plea to perform an emergency audit, investigation into the Alternative Learning Environment Programs in the state of Arkansas. The things that I'm sharing with you are associated with the Alternative Learning Environment through the Archford Educational Service Cooperative. Even though the Archford Cooperative has a traditional service area, the Alternative Learning Area Program reaches far beyond the borders of the cooperative service area. The Alternative Learning Program serves over forty districts throughout Arkansas. I've reviewed Archford's submission on March the 31st, 2021, showing their assurances to the ADE. Testimony of Raphael Marlowe has revealed that they have violated almost all of these requirements with regard to the ALE that Vellonia service, that Vellonia uses at the Ruth Doyle campus in Conway. The organization is committing fraud, in my opinion. They do not have the appropriate amount of certified teachers required by law. Instead, they are performing a bait and switch on parents. When the students attend the Alternative Learning Program, they receive a report card with certified teachers' names on it. Those teachers are called teachers of records, but they are anything but. Arkansas defines teachers of record, and they are the actual people that teach and assess students. These people do not. They perform no instructional duties for the children in this alternative learning settings. They have never met these kids. They have no idea what these kids are learning, as they provide no instruction or plans. They don't even know how many report cards around the state their names appear as teachers of record on. They've just been told that that's the way it is by the director. Arkansas defines teacher of records, and these, again, are not teachers of record. They are housed all over the state. There is an over-representation of children who are on IEPs in alternative learning environments. These services they receive are not aligned with their IEPs, but are limited to a memorandum of understanding this Alternative Learning Program has with the individual districts. There appears to be no follow-through or follow-up with the district once children are placed in the Alternative Learning Program. The state doesn't track kids who are on 504s in ALE. Arkansas State requires six hours of instruction per day. In most of these programs, there are six periods of fifty minutes. No matter how you count it, it doesn't add up to six hours of instruction. But even more egregious is the home district determines the transportation schedule. So oftentimes, these children in alternative learning environments start their days later and leave before the instruction has ended. Some of these kids are only getting four hours of instruction a day. Most of these, which are not really instruction because they have no teachers, most of these kids return to their homes before their traditional school day ends. If the purpose of the ALE is to help kids be successful and keep them in school, this also needs to be investigated. As many times, rewards are given for Fridays off, like in an equipment ALE. Once a student had, I advocated for a student, he was given a four-day-a-week because his behavior was so good, yet he was maintained in ALE for a year because his behavior was so bad. But he had every Friday off. The superintendents have submitted program plans for review, and they have to verify the amount of certified teachers. The Archford Cooperative certifies this, but these certifications are bogus. In the program at Ruth Doyle and Conway, there are forty-five students, and there is one certified teacher. She's certified and specialized in social studies. The certified teacher of record of these kids of this particular program in the English Language Arts is out of Texarkana and is a music teacher. The health teacher and PE teacher listed as a teacher of record is at a Greenbrier, but offers no instruction for these kids.
Thank you, Ms. Alma. The time is up. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and I've talked to Dr. Pfeffer and Secretary Oliva. They are going to look into this and bring us back a report next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any board member have a question or a comment this morning?
I have a question, just pertaining to the waiver approvals. I know we're holding off on approving Archford's requests. Are there any other ALE requests on here or expected before us in the coming months?
Not on the current list that we're asking you to approve. Those are all from school districts and the correctional facility.
Yeah, I just, I think Ms. Allenbaugh's comments and her investigation, you know, and the advocacy work she does is starting to highlight some serious needs, and my suspicion would be that it's probably broader than one cooperative. It is easy for entities maybe to not prioritize ALE instruction as well as it should be prioritized, and I would just like us to take a deep look at whether other situations may exist beyond just Archford's. So that's why I asked the question about anybody else on here, but no more questions about these waiver requests.
Okay, very well said. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members on this issue? Okay, we are going to vote now just on the long-term subs on the list that are not Archford. Do I have a motion for those? The motion would be to approve or not approve the long-term sub list with the exception of Archford.
I make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the long-term subs list with the exception of Archford by Ms. Rollins. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Hunter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Again, we will, I think, hear a little bit more about this next month.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
When we get these requests, would it be possible for us to also get, like, percentage of classrooms, maybe for each school or each district that are in that, I mean, I'm looking at the spreadsheet and I don't see it. It may be in another place.
Yeah, if you, if you look at, go back to your agenda, we have one that says percent of teachers on ALPs. But I don't think we get one for long-term subs. Is that correct, Ms. Saracini?
Yeah, and I think, though, on here, you can see a total. It looks like a spring total for some of those districts. And remember, a long-term sub could come into play. You know, maternity leave is probably one of the biggest drivers for the need for long-term subs, and so we'll be doing a lot more conversation around that as we go forward with the implementation of learns, but medical leave, stuff like that. And I think we also want to really do a good job of making sure districts understand that we do have that emergency teaching permit, and a lot of times, they forget that they can actually have someone that works under a permit that meets the qualifications and if they're going to truly step into that role of a teacher of record. So we're going to be doing a lot of work over the summer to help everyone really understand those pathways and have a good way to do those checks as requests come in.
They pick that criteria for teacher, but do you have to ask for waiver leaves?
No, sir.
Mr. Wood, would you like to say something on long-term subs, similar to what we're doing with the ALPs, or?
I personally would appreciate that, especially kind of worked into the spreadsheet that we get just so that the information is right there, you can easily readily see what the picture is in the district or in the school building that is requesting that waiver.
Do you want it separate from the ALPs, or would you like it, ALP and long-term sub together? Which would you rather have?
I suppose separately. Do we consider them separately?
Okay, all right. So, Ms. Saracini, she's nodding, so I think she can make that happen. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this issue? Ms. Freino?
Ms. Newton, and this just might be me, but that agenda item was pulled from consent, and it sounded like you voted only on the long-term subs and not on the ALPs. So just to be clean, I would suggest that you also vote on the ALPs.
Go ahead and do that now.
Because, yeah, because it's not real clear if every, if the whole item was pulled or just this long-term sub. So, yeah, if you could just vote on it now, then we can be certain.
We will take care of that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, so Ms. Freino would like us to also vote on the ALPs for the month of May. So do we have a motion to approve the ALPs?
I'll make the motion to approve the ALPs.
All right, so I heard both of you at the same time, so I'm going to go with, Mr. Sutton's picture popped up first, so Mr. Sutton made the motion to approve, and Mr. Henderson seconded the motion to approve the ALP reports and waivers. Do we, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, any more discussions on ALPs or long-term subs? All right.
One thing I'd like to, as my last meeting, for my last meeting, and for secretaries to learn, and it's just something for seven years that I've always questioned if we didn't approve it, for do we have an action plan for them to take back? And I just, you know, as I sit here and I see us getting this, probably twenty percent of our board time on approving the waivers because of our area of where we are, so it's just something that I want as strategic to think, what if we say no? I mean, we really, what happens tomorrow and where the kids go in the classrooms if we don't approve it? And I, I think it's the time that we spend on that, you know, to know if we say no, what do they do?
Yes.
I just, and that's something, you know, I know we've been talking about this when we came, Ms. Newton, for years.
Yeah.
And so I asked that question, okay, what if we say no, we don't approve it? Well, what do they do when they go back to their communities?
Yeah. What happens to those kids?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so I think if, you know, like I used to coach you, and I'd say, if I tell my coordinator not to call this plate, I better give him a plate to call.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, you know, I think that's important, that we give that type of leadership if we tell them we don't approve what they ask us to do.
Yeah. I think that was a question for you, Secretary.
No, not right now.
I didn't want to put your slide back to think about that.
Because I've asked the previous secretary, saying, I just think in the future, because I brought something to the board, and you told me no, then I would want you to tell me what to do, because I'm asking you a waiver to do what I think is going to help me teach kids.
I think that's a fair question, and as we go look a little bit deeper into what these requests are, why do they keep happening? Do we have rules that are unenforceable? Is this just a lesson in futility? What is the real root of the problem? We'll come up with some strategies to help support districts and bring those recommendations to the board.
All right. All right, so we're going to move on then to consent agenda. Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda that they would like to discuss or call?
I have a question on that. Arkansas Better Chance Program grants.
Okay.
Would you look at that?
Yes. Ms. Bridges? All right. Good morning.
Hi.
Ms. Rollins?
I'm not even sure how to ask. I was, are we voting on, it talks about ABC is also requesting to support foster children as well as homeless displaced children as the need arises. But to me, it wasn't apparent in your grant request. Are we already allowing this, and do we vote on this piece today? I want to make sure this piece is in our vote.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Lori Bridges. I'm the Director of Early Childhood Programs over the Arkansas Better Chance Program. And the way that we have it in our rules and regulations are that if children come that are displaced or in foster care, we give them immediate access to early learning. So the way, they have limits on classroom size. So if they already have twenty children, or their award is for twenty children, if they can immediately support a child, then we give a waiver, and then we have to have it in these records, so finance can go ahead and add additional award for that program.
Okay.
So we, we have it in our rules and regs that we serve those children immediately, but we have to have it on record, so finance can then add that additional award to those programs for serving those children.
Even if they don't have a slot?
If they don't have a slot, we do then allow them, because our ratios are lower than minimum licensing, as long as it doesn't go over what minimum licensing requires for ratio and those, for capacity. For, for example, if licensing says they have the capacity to serve twenty-five children in that classroom, but Arkansas Better Chance only allows up to twenty children, as long as they don't go over licensing, they can add an additional child in that classroom if they're coming from a situation like that.
Does it take care of transportation as well, if the child is homeless, or?
The program does not. Now, there are probably wraparound services that can support that child and families with those situations.
Well, thank you. You clarified that one.
Yes, you're welcome.
I just want to say something along those lines. Two of my granddaughters came out of foster care, and we got them at Christmas time, and our local ABC stepped up, took them right in, and it made the transition so much easier because dealing with foster children, they're coming out of situations that are traumatic anyway, and having life change and being uprooted, and having a place for them to go and to be nurtured, and this is one of the most valuable things as far as helping children that you do. I know it's a lot of learning and teaching, but just to, just to be able to put them into that environment, and it's a safe place, and it's taken care of without the foster parents having to worry about, what am I going to do? Where are we going to go? And just along the other things, it's very much appreciated. So I'm so glad that that's written in there.
And that's the intent of this program.
Yes, yes. Very well done.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Anything else on consent that you would like to pull or discuss? Okay, if not, then I need a motion to approve the consent item, our consent agenda? Thank you. I think everybody's asleep this morning. All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Hunter.
Second.
Seconding by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, we are to the new business. Is there any new business to bring before the board? All right, we're going to, board, I couldn't get you to talk, but you still moved right on through that, so you've done a good job this morning. Let's take a break, and then let Ms. Sharon get her things and give you a chance to get up and move around, and then we'll come back and do our report. So we'll take about a ten-minute break, thereabouts. We'll come back at ten fifteen.
We don't have to push buttons anymore. One thing that Dan did tell me, we've changed back to the old microphone system of what we were using during COVID. And so this is our pre-COVID system. But he says it doesn't pick up as quite as easily as the old system. So you have to get close and you need to speak up and speak loud. And the other thing is when you're not speaking, if you don't want the microphone in front of you, don't push it up because it picks up the sound of the room, push it down instead. Okay? All right. So that's the old, that's the old, old rules that Dan wanted me to reiterate this morning and I forgot. So. Self-spoken people, so get close and talk loud. There you go. There you go. All right. And so we don't want to get in trouble with Dan because Dan does too much to take care of us. So let's make sure we all do what we need to on our microphones. So thank y'all for that. All right, so we'll move on to our report section. Does anyone from the board have something that you would like to share this morning? All right. Then that moves us on to our ATOI report, Ms. Song.
Perfect. Okay, so this is my May report. After we left the board meeting last month, we had the teacher commitment signing day at the Capitol, which was a really awesome event. That was really exciting and I think to have all of us there and to celebrate these future educators was really important. And again, we saw these future educators here again this morning. And I think we need to continue to celebrate these students in high school and college and really the experiences they're having before they even leave high school. They know that they want to go into the profession because they've had the opportunity and the experience to be in the classrooms. So this was a really, really great event and a lot of fun. After that, I have been working a lot with Arkansas, with PBS in the last month or so. So we filmed part of an inclusive practices course at Northside Elementary School in Cabot. And so they have been implementing inclusive practices across all K-4 for our students who receive special education services. And it has been really incredible to be in their school multiple times, to see the work that they're doing and to see the changes from the beginning of the year, both in teacher attitudes towards what they're able to do and in student impact. There was multiple times at the beginning of the school year, these teachers said, I don't know that we can do this. I don't know how we're going to do this. And now they are fully onboard. They are not having a self-contained classroom next year. They will still have a community-based learning classroom for their students with the most significant needs, but they are going to have their two resource teachers and two self-contained teachers all working in classrooms with students and providing them the core instruction in that general education classroom with the extra, the more, the supports that they need. And so it's always great to highlight teachers doing this incredible work. Also with the special education team filming some of that course there to have our subject matter experts here from DFC. And then I was able to go to UA costat with Kyle Brewer, who I actually met at education conference at the beginning of this year. He has an amazing story of addiction recovery. And it was Save Our Students Week. And so I attended that and spoke alongside him. We did Narcan training for students and people in that community. And it's just such a, it's something that's just gripping our nation, the addiction and overdose issue. And so it was great to attend this training, to have that Narcan kit on hand that I hope I never have to use, but to be prepared to use it in the case of an emergency. And I know there was a rally at the Capitol too for Save Our Students. And I think it's great to get into some of these different communities and provide this training and this really important information about opportunity to overcome addiction. Especially, like I said, Kyle's story is just incredible. So it's always wonderful to be able to be alongside him and share when he is sharing. Month of the military child is April, which obviously is something very near and dear to my heart. I wanted to thank Senator Bozeman and Governor Sanders. Both of them put out something, a proclamation from the governor and Senator Bozeman put something on the social media as well, recognizing and honoring our military-connected students. Again, this is something very near to me with my family being military-connected. So you can see my daughter and I there at her school. They had a Purple Up Parade and paraded the students to the school with flags and celebrated the students as just an important part of their community and important members of those classrooms. Some of these students are going to be moving six to nine times in their K-12 education. And so to feel connected to something and to know that they have people that love them is just so important. This is another one of my students. You probably remember some other pictures of her. She's a military family. And one thing our school has done is provide those Panthers for students when the father or mother is gone. And so just something extra special for them to have. They had a brunch for them with donuts and just a really special thing to celebrate the students in that school. And it's fun to highlight them to their classmates and then open up that door for conversation about some of the struggles and unique challenges that they face. So it was great celebrating in different schools across the state that month. We had the Education Town Hall in Jonesboro for LARMS. And it was, I think, an incredible, Secretary, I think you guys did an incredible job emphasizing the focus of LARMS and the changes that are going to be coming, but how important our educators are. And so it was really special to be there. And I'm an ASU grad, so I loved, loved being back on campus there. I was able to go to College Station, to the George H.W. Bush Library last month. That is on the wall inside the library, that big. It was just, I think everybody had about 10 pictures in front of that before we left. And then this was at the George Hotel that we stayed at. But those are all books in the shape of a Texas flag on that wall there. It was incredible. Do this sometime with an American flag. I can't imagine the work that went into that. This was an incredible opportunity for me. We talked about strategic partnerships, but retired General Mark Welsh was there. And I had the opportunity to speak to him about how military spouses and dependents can partner with our Department of Defense to support our military families better. He said, you need to call my wife. And so I made sure to give him my phone number and said, please have your wife call me instead of just asking for her number. But it's just so important to continue to form these partnerships. Again, Danielle Crutchfield Cummings is an educator from Little Rock. She's in charge of assessment for LRSD. We had never met and she's in this program alongside me. So to be able to connect with another educator in Arkansas that I never would have met has just been incredible, on top of just other people who are working across different fields throughout the United States. So I am just loving that program. I go next week to the Johnson Library in Austin. And so I'm really, really excited as that program starts to wind down. And then you've heard me brag about my daughter and her team over and over. They were in Dallas for the VEX World Championships. They did not bring home a win, but you can see their theme was a League of Their Own. They were an all-girls robotics team. And so we were decked out in all pink and red and had this League of Your Own theme. I don't know that they can truly grasp the experience they had yet. They competed against teams from China, Australia, Afghanistan, Ethiopia. I mean, truly, when we talk world, this was representation throughout the whole world. It was hard and some of these kids, what they were able to create was unbelievable. But for them to be able to go and compete on a level this large and to meet children from all across the world, share experiences. These teams would show up and they'd say, we need a plan together before, before we compete. And to see them work through some of this stuff together because they would do teaming was just wonderful. And I will be forever grateful for that experience for her and for these educators that supported that. I've mentioned before, the confidence in my daughter from experiencing something like this, it's going to extend for years into her life. So I think anytime we can provide opportunity and experiences for students like this, it's just incredible. And then we've been filming Rise and Shine with PBS for this summer. We spent, I spent last Saturday and Sunday in Conway at the PBS studios. Saturday, my children were able to film a few episodes with me. And then I went back Sunday by myself. It is going to be absolutely incredible. We have a time machine there, that's on the right. And then my big journal that I wrote in a few different times. And they made me actually write with that giant pencil, which was quite challenging. But this summer's program is, it's just going to be incredible. I know we've got other ATOIs coming in in the next few weeks. And then I'm going back in June because we're adding some pre-K programming, which I used to teach pre-K, so I'm super excited about. But this is just such a great way to continue to offer that summer bridge learning. And then again, teachers can continue to use it in their classrooms, whether it just be the read-alouds, the lessons, the activities. And they are aligned with our new updated standards as well. So this is going to be really fun to share. And I think that starts typically the Tuesday or Wednesday after July 4th. A few more pictures from there. They always let me wear my roller skates, although that fake sidewalk and grass was not super roller skate friendly. But we still had a lot of fun. And then that's Aja on the right. She's one of the producers we've been able to work with a lot. I was going to share one episode. We were sorting animals by their characteristics and the classic, for a class pet. And it got down to all the characteristics and we chose a dwarf hamster. Well, my daughter has wanted a dwarf hamster. For two years, she actually made me a report on why she should have a dwarf hamster. And so at the very end, my husband, bless his heart, he had no desire to add another mouth to feed at our house, but he walked out with a real dwarf hamster for her as her pet. And she was like, holy cow, a real dwarf hamster! It was, she had no clue because he kind of came from behind her. So I am, I'm just so excited to share this program with you guys when it comes out this summer. And then these last two pictures were the Teacher Appreciation Week visits I've been able to do yesterday at Valonia Junior High. And, oh, I'm sorry, this was the teacher at Phoebe Junior High and then Valonia Junior High. I think they were both a little bit shocked. This teacher, when I walked in, she's like, I recognize you. Why are you here? Everything's fine. Everything is good. So to be able to celebrate them, I think, in front of their students as well and to be able to say, you have an incredible teacher who's making a difference. You know, they were clapping, they were cheering. And that's what it's all about, is recognizing teachers, letting them know they're valued and celebrated this week and how much we appreciate them showing up and putting in all this work every day. Sometimes into the evening and we know it's hard, but we have seen all across the state, people from the department visiting teachers. And I, I just think it's incredible. I think that there's not a better way we could celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week than going in these classrooms and just telling a teacher, we see you, we recognize you, and we thank you. So that is the end of my report. It's a little bit shorter because I had some longer trips mixed in there. But it's incredible and I'll have one more for you next month. I'm not sad, no, it's fine. But this is just, this has been incredible. And I'm excited to kind of fill in these last six weeks or so with as much as I can. Thank you.
Good job. You're busy as ever, so we appreciate all that you're doing for, for teachers around the state. And I had one recognition that I was supposed to make and I forgot until, I want to make sure that we congratulate Ms. Rollins. She changed from Ms. McFetrich to Ms. Rollins over since the last time that we've seen her. So we want to offer our congratulations to you and Dr. Rollins. We appreciate you so much. All right. Commissioner, I think you, ready for you?
Sure. So I want to make a motion that either Jessica starts doing all of my reports because it's so motivating and uplifting, or I have to go before her. So I don't have to follow her because she's, she's just been such a wonderful ambassador and liaison. And your passion and excitement around teaching and learning is so evident with all those reports. So thank you for always being out there. I know it's a big commitment. So we have a couple of things that we wanted to provide an update on. The first is, we've been talking a little bit about some of the transformation that we're working on, especially in some of our persistently lower-performing areas and some of our small rural communities. And specifically, even more specific, some of the schools that have been under state takeover or on the verge of state takeover, or maybe give an update on where some of those schools are, are at. So we, we like to take for the next couple of months, an opportunity during the commissioners' report and update to kind of do a state of the state of each one of, some of the school districts that have been on our radar. And we want to just give an in-depth overview and some progress on what we're seeing and learning and how we plan to continue supporting these communities moving forward. So if it's okay, if the first district that we'd like to do this month is the Earl School District, so with the board's permission, I'd like to call Stacy Smith up to the podium to do, to do an overview on, on the Earl School District.
Welcome, Ms. Smith. I think this is the lightest that you've appeared in on a board.
I know. I kind of like it. Let's keep it this way. What do you think? What do you think? So, so today, we're going to talk about Earl School District. And next month, I'm going to come to you with an action. Okay? So today, I want to give you an overview of what we're thinking, the reasons for that, and give you the next month to be able to dig into, to other, and have other questions. All right? We do have some members of Earl with us today. We have Titian Holes, who is the superintendent. We have April Witherspoon, who is on the advisory board. And Arthur Berry, who is also on the community advisory board.
Welcome.
There we go. So I'm hitting you with it up front, okay? This is the recommendation that I'm going to be asking you guys next month. And I wanted to give it to you at the front of my presentation. So you're thinking about this as I'm going through the presentation. One is to recognize that the Earl School District has met the fiscal distress plan and is making adequate progress towards all objectives. Okay? Under law, after they've met fiscal distress, we still have oversight for an additional three years. Okay, for fiscal. Two is to continue to provide the Earl School District Level Five Support through a limited authority board. Okay, so right now, they do not have a board. And we'll talk about what the status is right now. So I'd like to re-establish the suspended board that has continued to meet since 2017. And Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Witherspoon and Mr. Berry are both members of that. And to, for the district to establish a contract with a third party to support implementation of an instructional model. Okay? So those, hitting you with those up front. And now we're going to go through the presentation kind of timeline. Earl School District was classified as fiscal distress in October 2017. In November, the following month, the board did an assumption of authority and dissolved the local, they didn't dissolve the board, they suspended the board. And the board became a advisory committee. Okay? So the board is made up of five members, okay? Four of those board members still regularly meet. One of them passed away, but they have met regularly since they were suspended and has remained involved. On May 9th, 2019, they were classified in Level Five Support. But assumption of authority was never done under Level Five. It was only assumed under authority under the fiscal distress plan. So fiscal distress back in 2017. This was the whole reason the district was, the board was dissolved and the district came underneath the department. And the records reflected close to $2 million in improper expenditures. Corrections were not made in the following year. They had inaction to implement AD guidance during that time. Poor fiscal management procedures. And this was, this was central office staff, bookkeepers. There was, you know, bad business going on. Outstanding debts, non-payment to vendors, contract and payroll issues. The indicators of that, failure to correct material audit exceptions. It required a loan of over $600,000 from the Department of Education to pay back federal funds. They are on a monthly payment plan where they are paying us back. And we've talked about that before in here. Limited cash available for operating. Critical repairs needed and maintenance at the facilities in the school district. I was not a part of this when the Earl School District came under authority. But I can tell you that members here at the Department of Education felt like the elementary school especially was actually a dangerous place for children to be in. That you literally went into the bathroom and you had stall doors leaning over and things like that. So this was in 2017. Difficulty managing their payroll obligations each month. So those were the reasons for the fiscal distress plan. So at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Eric Saunders, who helps with our fiscal distress and gives support, to kind of go through that plan and how they've met their objectives. I can tell you that the district, over the past couple of years, we have built capacity. This last year, especially with the superintendent, that's been, you know, her professional growth plan is to improve her capacity and understanding, making sure that we're utilizing our sources to the greatest extent possible. The impact of ESER and ARP for this district was, was big. It allowed us to, one, get out of a bus lease that was ballooning on us. And we were having difficulty even trying to make the payment on that. So the impact of those funds was huge. It also allowed us to create, we had HVAC project and some other issues that the district desperately needed. And the district has not had any audit findings. But I'm going to let Eric kind of go into each of the objectives.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
So starting with the fiscal objectives, you'll find five main fiscal objectives. And we have subcategories of these specific actions that we've worked with the district on. So the very first one is, district will not have any audit findings on their annual audit. So if you go back and look, go on So if you go back and look, go on back two years, you'd find that there was one finding two years ago. It was for an expenditure with federal funds. There was a 10% variance. And so essentially what that means is they made a purchase and it just simply wasn't budgeted in the right thing. What's not that it was an unallowable purchase, it's just that it was not in the budget. And so it was just a, a simple finding on that one issue. Last year, there were not any audit findings. Going to the next objective, the district maintained closing net legal balance equal to or greater than $480,000 and maintained close of the building fund. So this is trying to build up the reserves. And this is a long-term plan. This is a long-term goal. Understand the $480,000 calculation is probably slightly inflated because that's based upon three years of July expenditures. And over the course of the last couple of years, districts have had ESER funds that in, inflates expenditures in that sense. So probably a more realistic numbers right around the $340,000 mark. And the reason that is, is that's roughly one month of average months of revenue to, to have that available at that time. So last year, just to give you a little bit more guidance on that would be the district closed at $379,000 of their net legal balance, to give you where they are. Now where they'll close this year is totally dependent upon tax collections. Most of the tax collections come in second semester in the May and June. And so it's waiting to see how those tax collections come in on time with that. Understand that one of the big focuses that we've done, especially this year, I can say is really working with the district and, and they've done an excellent job. And I want to commend Tish on that. We've really done a lot of focus on trying to look at historical trends on specific line item expenditures to try to understand where the district has been and where it's going in their expenditures with, I'd say approximately 200, 200 categories in revenue and expenditures. Looking at the trends, looking forward and getting accurate budgets and knowing exactly what things are going to cost to be able to, to meet these goals. And all this while it's at a moving target. So as you'll see a graph later, you know, roughly in 2018, the district had 560 students. This year, it had 415. So you're constantly adjusting, constantly monitoring and trying to do with the staffing and moving people around to make it work within your finances and providing the best for kids. Next objective was district will comply with the required financial reporting. And they've met all the deadlines for the financial reporting. We have cycle reports, nine of those a year that's done, not just on the student side of the, of the software, but also the financial side. And they kind of co-mingle with serving dual purposes there. We also, we monitor all debt by the district. In other words, anytime that they need to go buy a package of paper, that we go through that debt request. There is a process and we go through each one of those, ensuring that there are funds available. And I've worked with the district on that and approving that as well. Repaying the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. So as Ms. Smith mentioned earlier, the over $600,000 of the loan for them to repay unallowable expenditures is part of an audit finding back from, was it 2017? 2017. District has met all those payments. It's $10,000 a month. As of this month, they've made this month's payment. So they have a balance right now of 218,000. So they've paid over $300,000 of those monthly, $10,000 at a time. One of the good things about that is once that is paid off, that's essentially $120,000 every year that basically go back to the operations of the district. The last one is the implement effective financial principles or practices. We, we as OCSS and DSA, we work with the district. We meet at a minimum one time a month and go through a lot of reports and, and things. We go onsite as well. We have done an audit this year of, of their district in regards to their practices, how they're doing things and, and looked at how can we tweak what's going on to make sure that the accountability is there and everything is flowing smooth. And I'll commend Tish on this also. She was very, she took a lot of initiative of this in the fall and really implemented revisiting their current practices because you have policies that come in a policy book, but you may also have procedures, you have financial procedures that are kind of daily operations. In other words, when a PO comes in, who does it go to? How does it get coded? And lining out that workflow. And she's created those documents, worked with her staff on trying to find the most effective and efficient way to do that. And then went back and trained her staff. And so I think she continuously monitors that and looks for adjustments and has done an excellent job with that. Some of the other practices that we include in the fiscal distress plan that they do, the review of the baked statements, bank reconciliation, weekly review of board report that gives a breakdown of all accounts. And just as a, one way to monitor the effective financial practices also is there are multiple expenditure and carryover requirements. In other words, you can only carry over X percent of certain budgets and like net legal balance, maintenance and operation, GT, maintenance of effort, categorical funds and federal funds. And they've met all those, to my knowledge, at this time. So that's where we're at on the.
All right. Let's see if any board members have, have any questions for you, Dr. Saunders. I'll start with Mr. Sutton.
Uh, Dr. Saunders, have they been able to meet their bond debt obligations?
Yes.
No other questions for me.
Okay. Mr. Henderson?
No, actually, that was going to be the question I was going to ask. So Steve beat me to it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Dr. Hill? Ms. Hunter?
So, you know, it's, it's often a very long road to, you know, kind of turn around a business office, which is really what you're doing. So how do you feel about cross-training, you know, the stability of the staff? You know, because we don't want to have like one person who's key to everything and make sure it's an ongoing solution.
No, that's, that's a great point. And that's, you know, one thing that anytime you have turnover. And so it's back to the old cliche, you don't put all your eggs in one basket, you know? And you, you have to look at that cross-training. And, and I think a lot of that also is to be able to provide that continuity through transition is when you have written procedures and policies and everybody understands them. And I know that Tish has worked this year on, with some of her staff on putting them into different positions and giving them different roles, kind of the cross-training that you're referencing.
Mr. Wood? Ms. Rollins? Ms. Woods? Ms. Son?
I just had one question. I know Ms. Smith said that after, if they were to be released, that you would have three years of oversight. Could you tell me the difference in what that three years would look like versus the previous five that we've come out of as far as oversight of the district?
Yeah, I think what it would be, I think, you know, as, as I would envision, you know, we would start off very, very tight and very similar to what we're already doing and then release as, as we see it's able and then adjusting back and forth.
Okay. All right. That, that makes me more comfortable that it's not going to just be go and, and do good. Okay? All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Eric. So, you know, right now, because the way it's set up, they have to do debt requests each, each for when they're spending more than, is it 500 or 1,000? Do we weigh each other?
Everything, everything. So when we get into this next phase, that cap will, you know, we'll start gradually lifting the cap of, of the expense. So we're not doing the ream of paper. We'll be doing it maybe anything over $250. But they'll be looking at the expenses each month, our office will. So it's that gradual release piece. Ms. Hunter, your question, that does put this district at great risk. Capacity with internal business staff. And again, this is an area to commend Ms. Knowles. I mean, over the past three years, I'm aware of two employees that she has, has had to redirect or reposition or reassign due to not proper management. And so again, building capacity locally in a really small district around finance is, it does put a district at high risk. And we have talked about, you know, when districts at a certain size, is it more beneficial to outsource with a group who has practices in place? And the, they're, the funding right now is so tight in the district that cost-wise, it's funding-wise, it's more cost-efficient to stay in district than to have an outside source. But that is something that we will continue to watch. If there were to be a leadership change, they would definitely be high risk for any type of monitoring for fiscal. All right.
That kind of a question too?
Yes.
Yes.
Me?
Yes, Mr. Sutton.
Oh, okay. Stacy is, and I know Ms. Knowles is there, is she a, an employee of the department or is she the superintendent employed by the district?
She's superintendent employed by the district. However, she was appointed by the department. But her, she is paid for through district funds, but she was an appointed superintendent.
Okay. I may ask you some, I don't want to go over that maybe right now, but I do have some questions about retaining her during this three-year plan.
Right. So as, yeah.
So pleased with her performance.
So as we look for it, as I'm going to continue on with the presentation and talk about Level Five Support and the Limited Authority Board and establishment of that, that will probably give you some guidance in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Moore, I apologize. I did not realize that you were online. So I apologize for not calling on you sooner. So.
I joined on the phone. No, I joined on the phone and I'm driving in. I wanted to ask about teacher salary and make sure they're on track for the new salary increases.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Okay. Any other questions, Dr. Moore?
Not right now, thank you.
And you didn't have, did you have any teachers making over 50,000 before? Tish, no, yeah. This will be, there wasn't a single teacher in the district making more than 50,000. So every teacher will go to 50,000.
Okay. All right.
Someone called out, they would like 50,000 to be paid.
Yeah, so they'll get them, but, okay, yeah. Okay. So Level Five Support. So in 2019, two years after fiscal distress, they were classified in Level Five Support. An additional support going in to help with staffing, academics, enrollment, and then continuing to help in the business office. When you're talking about staffing, they face the same struggles that everyone else in the region is facing. However, they have worked diligently over the last couple of years to get licensed staff in their classrooms. Could you remove the Zoom thing at the bottom? So you can see in grades one through six, the majority of their teachers are licensed. If they're not licensed, they're on a pathway. The kindergarten teacher was actually one that we came and talked to you guys about that was a paraprofessional that was being the Arkansas Teacher Residency. That was one that you had to get away with for earlier. All of first is licensed, second, third. You've got the MAT program with fourth grade. They actually contract with a licensed math teacher who does Zoom in for math instruction in fourth grade each day now. That's not represented up here. In the secondary, you can see the core subjects are primarily licensed teachers. You can see the number of students per grade level as well.
What, I don't see math. So tell me about math.
Ooh, I had, I had left math off. Tish, I left math off the thing. Is it licensed?
Yes, there, there are two.
So I know what it is. It's the, the word, the second one that says ELA grade seven through 12, that's supposed to say math. They're both licensed.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Newton.
Okay. Well, I was, you know, I looked for math. I'm sorry.
Listen, and that was supposed to say math.
I'll zoom in on that. Sorry.
I had originally built it where it was like ELA six or seven through certain grade. And then like, then I, I messed up on that. So thank you for catching that. So staffing-wise, license-wise, we're about 71% of the teachers at Earl that are licensed. Okay? That's a good thing. We are not where we want to be in academic instruction or what's happening in the classrooms. So there is a lot of work still to be done in that area. That's through classroom walkthroughs. Current, we know currently what we have going on, we've got a long ways to go still. Okay? But we do have licensed staff. Enrollment for the district, this has always been kind of the Achilles' heel and, and what we've been watching. So when the assumption of authority happened back in 2017, you have seen that they've had a stark decline. And even before that, it was the same type of rapid decline that you were seeing there. The last three years, they still have had a loss each year, but it has flattened out a little bit. So here's the achievement part. And again, we are not where we want to be, but I can tell you, and the reason why I put this graph on here is because it shows where they are in achievement and it shows where they are in growth. Okay? And I've, I've showed this to you before. So this is all the elementary schools in the state. Okay? So the blue are all the other schools. The black square would be the Earl School District on there. So you can see where they're at. What you want to happen is you want to be on growth. You want to be on the higher growth side. They're right there at like 79.5, I think, or 79.8 for elementary growth. They're almost at that 80 number. Okay? We want them 80 or above. All right? But they are close to their students making their, their average growth. Achievement-wise, they're still lower than we would like them to be. However, what we're seeing is we're seeing them moving along this diagonal path up and that's what we want.
That's what I was going to ask. Just going from past memory, that's a pretty significant jump in growth. Am I, am I remembering right?
Yes. And some of our other districts that are under state authority, they are the lowest corner left. Okay? So that's what you want to, to be able to see them going up. Okay? For high school this last year, again, achievement is still very low, but look where they are in growth. They were on the high-growth side. Okay? So that's what you want. But again, we've got to keep moving the achievement up. The number of students that are actually meeting ready is extremely low. So we are not anywhere where we want to be. Walking through classrooms in the school, we, we, we need a much stronger instructional model or expectation in the classroom. We have, the district has implemented some things that we want them to implement. We've just got to get it all working together. Okay? So let's talk about what some of those are. Emphasis areas with literacy coach, with learns. So they currently have a literacy coach assigned to them, but with learns, they're going to have one that's there more frequently. So that will be an area for K3 that will be emphasized. The district has implemented and purchased high-quality instructional materials in literacy as well, and it's aligned to the science of reading. We have to establish an instructional model. When we walk into classrooms, particularly in the high school, we need to know where, where are you at in this lesson? There's been, what, what, what we've talked about recently is too dependent on technology. Okay? District went one-to-one during COVID. Everybody got into Google classrooms and there just seems to be, you're walking in classrooms and you're seeing kids on computers, not interactive, not, not, teachers aren't teaching. And so we want to shift that model back from removing the technology, establishing a strong instructional model. We've been looking at some different third-party folks. When I say that, I'm not talking about a charter organization. I'm talking about external providers or folks who come in who do strong coaching around instruction. All right? So we feel like that's the emphasis that this school district needs. And it's more than just what my team can provide. You know, my team's there with the scheduling and this and we're trying to adjust everything, but that, what does that specific coaching look like in the classroom? That, that's something that we want to be able to establish as we move forward. Tish and her team are actually going to have some Zooms with some folks pretty quickly to kind of determine who we're going to go forward with that. So we're not there yet. I don't want anybody to think that we are satisfied with where Earl School District is in academic performance. However, we have purchased our high-quality instructional materials in all of our core areas. We have improved the facilities at the elementary and at the high school. In 2017, again, remember I told you the elementary school, we thought it was a dangerous site? It's no longer, okay, it's beautiful actually. They've increased the number of licensed staff to about seventy-one percent, which is huge. They have incorporated professional learning communities, and the systems are fairly seamless and in place at the elementary school. They have made satisfactory progress, and that was the reason the assumption of authority happened in two thousand and seventeen, they have made satisfactory progress on that plan. Their suspended board, which is now an advisory board, has maintained monthly meetings and has remained active.
That says a lot for, for that board to, to keep doing that under all these circumstances through COVID, through all the ups and downs, and I want to say thank y'all for that, because that's huge for showing your concern for the district and, and your community.
And I'll tell you something else, maintaining their records and reports and keeping things on time, they, I mean, when, it's a cycle report, I don't ever have to double check to see if Earl has theirs in, they have theirs, theirs in. And so those types of pieces are in place, we just got to get the instruction in the classroom to a much higher level. So, going back to my recommendation, my recommendation would be to recognize that Earl School District next month has met their fiscal distress plan, and they have made adequate progress. And so that we would, we release them from fiscal distress. However, we want to continue to provide level five support with a limited authority board, so it's not a complete release. Under fiscal distress, the assumption of authority is being released, however, under level five, there still is an assumption of authority, but through a limited authority board. We see that's working fairly well in, and that's working very well actually in Pine Bluff. Last night, they actually voted for Millage, and they've agreed on the high school plan. I mean, things that we were getting blown up about a year ago, right? They're moving forward, so I'll be excited to report on Pine Bluff in a couple of months. So I think that where we are right now with Earl, the ability for them to actually establish their board back, and again, us doing intensive training with them, the secretary being able to, as they make actions, everything comes to the secretary to review afterwards, and then he would have the ability to confirm it or overturn. Okay, so there will still be some oversight and some direction. And we would treat this board the same way that we've done in Pine Bluff, providing that training and that support to ensure that they really understand their role. So that's kind of the recommendation moving forward. As far as the board members, again, I would recommend that we take the current suspended board and reinstate them. So that would be Eric Cox and Charlie Cox, who are not related, Arthur Berry, who is here, April Witherspoon, and then they have the one position open because they did have a member who passed away. What I would recommend is that we allow these board members, the suspended board members, to actually accept applications and that they conduct the interview for the zone that doesn't have a member, and make the recommendation to the secretary of who their fifth member would be, and then they continue to function then for the next year as a limited authority board. And then over the next year, then, we would then begin working the process of how do we go forward with an election and things like that. So that's kind of our, our thinking and proposal right now. They have maintained their yearly requirements as a board, training, yeah, they have continued to get their, their hours every year, which is a commitment, isn't it?
Yes, it is, yes.
I really don't even know how to ask this question, but do we have any concerns that so much time has passed? Like for these four people since they were last elected, they just continue in their.
So I wouldn't say that they would continue in forever, okay? The fact that they have been invested and they have stayed involved, to me, makes them the most logical group to pull to forward immediately. But I do think over the next year, we have to establish the process, whether it's drawing lots or who goes up for election, what spots go up, and then they start getting into that elected piece. Under level five, we would still have two, is it about two and a half years, three years, two years? Two years under level five, right? For a limited authority board? Two thousand and nineteen, so I think we'd have two years.
So does their election time toll while they're suspended?
No, it does not. So you would be appointing them as a limited, we would be unsuspending them and like they would be being appointed. So the same way in Pine Bluff, you appointed that board, we would just be appointing these members.
Any other questions on the limited authority board?
Okay, so next month, I'm happy this month, if you have questions, something hits you, you want to know more information, please reach out to me, and then next month will come with the final recommendation.
Stacy, could, could you take a second, and I think let's, let's, let's make it clear the difference in this, this third party for the instructional model versus what we are undertaking in Marvel Lane, that they are not the same thing.
So, under, so right now, under learns, we still have to write the rules for a transformation contract, so potentially what we're doing here with a external provider coming in to provide curriculum and instruction support could potentially be that same thing, okay? However, for a third, a third party like we're talking about to be appointed, we have to, the state board has to approve who those are. And so we're still writing our rules there. So the concept we had with Marvel was someone running the day-to-day operations of the school, right, under a transformation contract, and because we've called it that, there'll be some accountability differentiations with it. Under this one with Earl, the potential for that's there, okay? But it's really more about direct support and having a plan on improving instruction in this particular school. So it's not running the day-to-day operations of the school, it's coming in with intensive support beyond just the state assisting.
And it's, it's, it's primarily objective is academics?
Yes, this would be primarily academics, my staff would still be assisting with finances and monitoring that what they're saying they're doing and contracting for is happening and that we're seeing progress.
Yes, and so there would be a high level of accountability for this third party to make sure that the academic piece is being put in place.
And they would need to, they need to demonstrate that they've had impact on transformation and being able to do turnaround schools, I mean, those are things that we're looking for. The concept that the state can come in with a team of five or six people and change everything from overnight is just not realistic. So moving my team into this format of we're doing more of the monitoring, the support, the planning, coordinating services is kind of where we're moving to.
I might push back just a little bit on the idea, and this is just one board member's perspective of how to select that fifth member of the.
Will you microphone it?
How to select that fifth member of what would be the limited authority board?
Still can't hear him.
Is this better? All right.
That is, yeah.
It's awesome. I love this. I, I would push back just a little bit on the, the idea of having the four members of the advisory board select the fifth member, almost select, I realize that it'll eventually be you know, Mr. Oliva's desk, or maybe, I have no idea. But I, I, I really liked the model that was used in Pine Bluff where those applications were more sent to to this office and an interview process and whatever, and the reason I say that is because it, sometimes it can just end up that it becomes a little too friendly maybe, and, and I, I think that, you know, when, when a community elects a board, sometimes those are not the friendliest relationships that all get together, and, and sometimes it's forced, and sometimes there's some friction, and, and I think that can be good, and you don't want someone just shutting down a system by any means, but, but some forced perspective and, and different perspectives can, can be good. And so I, I would probably encourage that, that path, but.
Good suggestion, we will definitely.
Love to hear from you on that. Second thing, might be related to the academics, how, how long have, has the department essentially been in charge of even the academic programming in the district? Because don't we, don't we essentially assume that responsibility even in a fiscal distress takeover situation?
So, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so when we classified them in two thousand and nineteen, one, the law had changed. We had been providing some support around curriculum. In two thousand and nineteen, the following year was COVID, and we were implementing all the high-quality instructional materials and trying to get that in at the same time while we were going to a digital model, okay? And so we're not where we need to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say we've done great work, we've, we've done work, we've been there, but we are not seeing the progress we need to see. That's part of the reason that we are thinking we need to bring in that third party to be much more intensive, because what we're doing right now is not getting the outcomes that we need to happen, and so we need to kind of step aside, help with organizing and coordinating, and try to, and try something else.
And that's fair, and, and my criticisms are not personal by any means.
I don't take them that way.
You know, because I know that there is no silver bullet, there is no singular, there's no magic wand that the state takes over a district, and so now we'll go fix it, okay, I get that, a hundred percent. It's just, is there an analysis of why? I mean, you look at some of these things, there, there's a lot of good news, a lot of good information coming out of there, the, the percentage of licensed teachers in the classroom is strong, and that's a vast improvement, but it's surprising that that doesn't result in higher achievement, the growth is good, I mean, even the high school is over eighty, and the district-wide or elementary was right on the verge of eighty. But why is the achievement not higher with that much improvement in other areas?
We have had some start and stops within the district, we've had some significant personnel that, things that we've had to address directly that have to deal with administration, which I can't share that publicly here.
Fair enough.
So that, that has been critical for us. We had, especially with high-quality instructional materials, there was resistance, resistance in the beginning from the staff. They really felt strongly about writing their own materials. You know, they had done some work with, you know, at Springdale, had put out some curriculum pieces, they were kind of trying to use those pieces. And they felt very strongly about their ownership of what they had created. And so having conversations and walking alongside people to actually adopt a curriculum materials and to implement it took time. You know, I feel like at times the Earl School District is a little bit insulated, that's what they know. You know, a lot of the people, you've got some folks who have worked there for a while, and that's what they know, and they feel like they're doing the best, and maybe not aware of what else is out there. And so trying to respect people, what they're doing, but at the same time, move them along. So I say there's like an insulated group, but then I'll say that there's lots of turnover in, in key roles, and so again, it's like we, I, I almost think pre-COVID, my team would have said Earl was making the most progress in academics while all these other things were going, and it's just kind of like we just got stumped. And then coming out of COVID, heavy reliance on the technology piece and haven't moved back away from that. And that's something we have to do, especially in the secondary.
Any other questions over here? Okay, anyone have a question? Ms. Song?
I just wanted to say Earl was the first district that I visited that was under this much state support. And it was radically transformative for me, and so I appreciate the opportunity, Ms. Gwynne's class, that kindergarten class, I remember hearing about it at this meeting with a number of students and a paraprofessional, but knowing that she's on that pathway to licensure, that is to this day one of my favorite classrooms that I've visited, and so I just wanted to share that with this board, that it, it was so important for me to go there. And it really just opened up my mind and my heart to education across the state outside of my district and what I know, so thank you for letting me come.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Song, we do have some highlights there, and we do have some teachers and staff who care. We have a community that cares deeply about their school. It is always difficult to get up here and, you know, say all the negative about a school, but the, the, our, our goal is to be transparent with the struggles, they're real, and the district still has a long ways to go. And so, but I do feel like the community is ready to at least be, like, start building the board back. I think having say is important, and when we've completely dissolved, that, that keeps, that, that's one piece that we're always going to be fighting against. There is a group in Earl who they desperately want say. So to your point of maybe we need to do more of an application piece, especially for that open position and look quicker at a turnaround for voted positions, that's something maybe we need to look at. While we do have a group that's been actively involved, I think, I think we have to leverage both sides, so I think it's a great comment and something to consider.
Any, any online, Mr. Sutton, Ms. Henderson, either one of you have questions?
Yeah, I was going to simply add, you know, the kind of tagline on, you know, what Mr. Wood said. You know, I too think, you know, it was a really great job done with Pine Bluff, and I'm just curious or wondering, will there still be some opportunities in Earl, perhaps like town hall meetings, opportunities for the board to, you know, maybe join you and your staff on some of those efforts in helping them along?
Absolutely, I mean, Earl School District does have a community person that they organize events with, and so that's definitely something that can happen. And I think when the board themselves starts functioning as a board again and having public meetings, it's a place for folks to go. Right now, because they're not functioning as a board, there's like a, an element on the city council meeting where education's talked about, and that, it needs to move over to the school board.
Thank you.
Mr. Sutton, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Stacy said. You know, I'm from Marion and Creighton County and been familiar with Earl for all my life, and I know that community is very proud of its school. It's had a lot of accomplishments from the academic side for years. I've had a lot of friends from Earl, and I think it's very important that we do what we can do to keep that school successful in Earl, keep it in Earl. They want to stay in, they want to keep that school there. So anything we can do to further that support, you know, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Any other questions from board members? All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Ms. Reno, do we have any public comments? Okay.
I have a couple more things.
Oh, you have more? I apologize.
No, no, no. So first, thanks to Ms. Smith for providing that update, and we're not taking action at this time, and this is probably where I start making the team a little bit nervous. And I, I know school may be out, but perhaps we consider having the next board meeting at Earl. If we're going to discuss this thing, we can be there and be receptive to the community, so if, if the board is open to that, we can explore that, if not, then maybe we can get a visit before school's out, because I think y'all are done by the end of May. Okay, so, we'll, we'll talk about that. Just a couple other quick updates, just want to bring to everybody's attention, I know we shared kind of our hundred-day report and remind everybody about the wonderful work this agency's been engaged with, traveling across the great state of Arkansas. But we continue to update our learns portals anytime I get a chance to update or spread www. learns ade arkansas.gov. That is our most up-to-date, latest spot for information, I know we get a lot of questions about work groups, when are they going to be announced, when they're going to be established? All that information's being uploaded and posted there, so that we're moving full steam ahead with implementation side. And I think the last time I was here, I told you we went to every single co-op, or maybe we hadn't quite gotten to everyone, trying to get these ones straightened out, but I can tell you by today, we've been to every single educational cooperative, met with pretty much every superintendent across the state of Arkansas, even did an extra cooperative with Charter School Networks, and then found out that some of the school districts like in Pulaski County, that they're not part of a cooperative, so we kind of adopted them as a sixteenth cooperative, and we did a stop with all the leaders from Pulaski County, we even brought in Jacksonville, Little Rock, North Little Rock, and started giving state-of-the-state updates, working together, and everybody's ready for implementation and getting these systems a little bit aligned. Also had an opportunity to present to the Higher Education Articulation Board, and learning a lot about some opportunities, I think we could have some more collaborative conversations or learning about some of the work that they're engaged in and how it impacts our work. So we're excited that Dr. Kenneth Borden was announced to be the next commissioner, he's going to be the, the commissioner of the Higher Education Board, so he officially starts at the first of the month, so at the next board meeting, we're going to invite him, if it's okay, to give him a spot on the agenda, introduce himself and share some data, because I, I think there's some data that was presented at the last board that impacts some of our work, when you look at retention rates of students, are, are they coming, you know, into the freshman year of college or university and then coming back the following year? What is the learner profile of these students? And leaned in pretty hard on the number of students that are going into remedial math instead of straight to college algebra. I think this is something that we need to put a work group together and come up with an action plan. Sixty-five percent of the students in remedial math as a first year of college or university had a three-point-oh GPA or higher, so there's a disconnect. And I want to start talking about that data and some of the work that we're doing in K twelve, I like to say plot out the math path.
All right, I like that.
Figured you'd like that one. And then a lot of student events have been happening. I know the FFA conference, I don't know if anybody's ever been to one of their leadership conferences, but I happen to be able to stop by. That is impressive, group of young individuals doing amazing work. So I know the team, Ross's team spends a lot of time putting that together, did a wonderful job. Had an opportunity to speak with a joint conference with the School Board Association and school superintendents. So that went, went pretty well. Most of us know Deshaun and the team with the Martin Luther King Junior Commission and sometimes we forget to brag on the wonderful work that they did. But they did a thirtieth anniversary and commemorative vigil here at the Capitol about a week or two ago and it was fantastic. So we, we need to bring him in in front of the board and, and have him give an update on some of the work that they're doing, because they, they go around the clock night and day and we, we want to make sure we give them their, their proper recognition. Another group that I've been, been able to meet with and work with is Economics Arkansas. They hosted an event and talked about a wonderful initiative with business leaders and students learning about finance and, and how to better themselves, really proud of their work. But then we heard a little bit with Carly and their team about teacher appreciation week. So we, we, and I know many of you participated, we test a lot of our folks here to, to, to get into schools and, and get into classrooms and let teachers know firsthand how much we appreciate them and, and school principals, school leaders. So I, I think there might be a few pictures we asked folks to send in that I, that I'd like to share. Then if you could scroll through that, just to highlight the wonderful initiative. People were really excited to, to be recognized and celebrated and they do, and we need to do this more. And I, I appreciate our team for, for, for getting out into the halls of schools. I often said I can't wait to get out of the Capitol halls and back into school halls. It's definitely more fun in schools.
Yeah, I imagine.
And it's great to see firsthand the wonderful things that are happening. So that concludes my update.
I'm sorry for, 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 anyway, so very good. Thank you for all that you're doing and thank you for all of the department getting out into teachers' classrooms. I, I know that, that means a lot to them because they work hard every day. And any recognition, any pat on the back, it just encourages them to keep going. So I know it's greatly appreciated. All right, so Ms. Reno, you said there were no public comments? Anything else from board members? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Sutton, you're too slow, they, they beat you out today. All right, we got a, a motion to adjourn by Dr. Hill. I think I heard a second by Mr. Sutton. All in, all in favor? All right, we adjourn. Thank y'all for, for being here today and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Lunch is upstairs.